Good afternoon, it's 4:00 PM and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session for Monday, August 1st, 2022. We'll start with public comments. I believe we have one. John Cohen, come on up. Good afternoon, John.
Good afternoon, Honorable Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. I just have kind of a couple of public announcements and I'd like the opportunity, one, to get them on Facebook Live, and two, to make sure that you know you're all invited. They're both on August 9th, and the first is at noon. It's a ribbon cutting for Victory Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, and Ram, and it's out on East 23rd Street, and they are gonna have a light lunch available that day. So they're hoping to have a good crowd. From turnout, they specifically said they hope they can meet some Ottawa and Franklin County dignitaries. So I would consider you most diggy of the dignitaries. So, please put that on your calendar. They haven't indicated who they went on shovels or anything, so very might be prepared for that, you know.
Good shovels.
Yeah. And then the other thing is that same evening as OU fusion, when we actually officially welcome OU students to town, and it's over at Legacy Square from 6:00 to 8:00, and you can buy a meal ticket at that. And so I hope you have both those events on your schedule, feel welcome, and we can see or have participation in both. And that's all I want this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, that moves us on to items to be placed on our regular City Commission Agenda, which is the minutes from our July 20th regular meeting and our July 25th study session. Commissioners, are we okay with moving on to our regular agenda?
Yes.
Sounds good. This is what we'll do. That moves on to items for presentation and discussion, which is presentation by Ottawa Country Club. Both of you coming up or just one?
Come on, come on.
Don't you want a supporter? Why? Come on.
Come on. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present what we have here. The Ottawa Country Club Association Equity Group has voted to accept offers for the sale of the property 1001 East Logan, which is a golf course and the buildings. There's a strong preference by our group to keep it above course for this city. We're here to see if the city might have an interest in acquiring or putting in an offer on the course.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
How many total acres is that?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
You mentioned that there's a, there's a strong desire among the equity owners to remain a golf course. Are there thoughts about the pool? I don't think that is as important. The pool's in pretty rough shape, yeah.
Same for the clubhouse, too. I mean, I haven't been there for a long time. How's it?
It's, yeah, it's getting rough, too.
Showing its age?
Well, it just hasn't had any tender living care for it.
Sure.
I mean, the main thing is that we keep a course here in the city.
And the kitchen is leased, still is very star, is that correct?
It is.
Yeah.
And there are apartments upstairs that are leased to, I guess, Great Life is in charge of all, but they get all their revenue from those leases.
Okay. Well, I certainly am in favor of looking at information that you may give legal that would be, we could look at. I think it's a, an important part of our community, and certainly something that we need to maintain as a golf course. There's certainly other places that if any kind of construction goes on, that could happen. But I think that'll be an amenity that we should offer anybody that's coming to our community. So certainly, certainly something I'm interested. Commissioners, are, I'm sure, I won't speak for you, but I'm sure you're interested in probably looking at it, too, and seeing what we can have a discussion about it.
I know, and there are other municipalities that have golf courses, so I would definitely be interested in looking at, to get warrants for their discussion.
Good. I think there's some interest from this table for sure of possibly having a discussion, possibly acquiring that land. We'll probably communicate via legal counsel with you guys and have some conversation down the line.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you for stopping by.
I'm sure that was. Way to go.
And he's in her hand.
Way to go. Excellent job.
The lease you have at Great Life, does it expire a certain time?
Yeah.
Is it?
Three years.
Three more years.
We're in the second year of the five.
Are you able to cancel the lease if you sell the property?
I, I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, that moves us on to item two, which is our 2022 Standard Traffic Ordinance and Uniform Public Offense Code with Chief Adam Ryan Gardner.
Just as exciting.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Golf carts are listed in the STO, so that kind of ties in with the conversation.
Nice job.
Each year, the state of Kansas adopts or updates laws that are regulated by state statute. The city of Ottawa uses the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code to mirror state laws as they're published and become effective July 1st of every year. So after July 1st, we come before you, asking you to consider adopting these updated ordinances, and that's what this request is for. Attached to your packet is a summary that we used to do ourselves, but then thankfully the league picked that up and provides that template to us. So each year, you get the same consistent updated information about what's changed in the new version that we're gonna adopt from the previous version. So with that, I would ask you to put this on your agenda for the next regular commission meetings, so that we can publish the ordinance. Once it's published, we then distribute the books and the new ordinance will become effective for enforcement. Stand for any questions that you might have regarding.
Chief, do you see any updates in any of these that may be highlights that we want to mention?
There's really no significant updates in this one for people that, for the, for the STO and the UPOC. There are some law changes that will impact people who are arrested for what we call felony DUIs, but not necessarily in the standard traffic ordinance. So the prior DUI offenses in a certain period of time can now enhance penalties for subsequent. So we call those third or fourth DUIs. So the state has now increased the penalties associated with subsequent DUI charges. That's been different from previous, but that does not impact the STO.
Commissioners, any questions for Chief? Do you want to have another discussion about this? Are you okay with moving on to our agenda? To Wednesday's agenda?
Yeah.
We'll do that. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to our 2022 project financing with Director Landis.
Thank you. So often, we will use long-term financing to be able to find a variety of projects when we either, it makes the most sense to finance them long-term, when cash isn't readily available, or maybe the useful life is longer than, than, or is, is long enough that it warrants financing a project, whether it's a construction project or an internal type of improvement project. So we have several, actually three different types of opportunities for a fall bond issue. And I outlined them in the memo, but I actually want to take them in kind of a different order than when I outline them. So we do have one, we have two bond issues that are callable on October 1st, the 2009A and the 2014A. And we've, they've been, we knew that they were coming, and several months ago, we talked about, well, actually, lots of months ago, we talked about refunding and then refinancing for interest savings. And then the interest rates started to go up, and there really wasn't going to be as much of an interest savings. So we kind of held off on that discussion until recently. And then we started talking about the Cedar Street project, and how if we were to pay cash for the current Cedar Street project that's been approved, how it would deplete, largely deplete the cash funds available in the stormwater fund. And that would make sense to go ahead and finance that over 10 years, so that we could extend the payments on that and allow some flexibility in that fund to do some other stormwater projects, instead of waiting for that to rebuild itself over several years. And so when we start talking about the two together, it makes sense that if we're going to do that, if we're going to finance the Cedar Street project, that we would go ahead and refund the other two issues at the same time, and we would have some savings there for our financing costs. So if we were to refund and refinance the 2009A and 2014A, there, right now, our estimate is around $57,800 in interest savings. It doesn't seem like a lot of money, but that's after financing costs. So it is something, I think it's worth probably going ahead and doing it, as opposed to holding on to them and hoping that those interest rates are gonna turn directions, which probably won't happen for a little while. And the more payments you make against those issues, the less savings you'll see in the future anyway. So if we had the opportunity, it's recommended that we go ahead and do it. The Cedar Street stormwater project, it is recommended, it's our recommendation that we go ahead and finance that project also. As a side note, that is a construction project, and typically, we wouldn't normally recommend that you go straight to long-term financing. Typically, we would tend to note a project, wait and find out what the final cost is, and then long-term finance it. You don't ever want to long-term finance too much or too little for a project, because you're stuck in a situation where you either have to come up with extra cash, or you have to, you're paying interest on money that you didn't otherwise need. In this case, with the total cost of the project and the estimates that were given to us, it's about $800,000 in total. That's with the redesign, with the construction bids we just approved, and then a contingency built in. The way that we could write that project description is so that if there are extra funds left over after that project is done, we can use those for other related stormwater projects, either in the area or related in some way. Any type of inlets, any of the replacements, any of those things that might be stormwater-related. If we do that, I don't think that we're going to be underfinancing this project, but even if we did, we do have enough cash in that fund to be able to, you know, fund an extra $100,000 or extra $200,000 if we had to, worst-case scenario. By giving us the opportunity to finance it long-term, though, it does make sense in this case that if we have another issue that's going to be long-term financed, we bundle it with this one. Together, we have savings in our financing cost overall. Then we were talking about other city projects and facility improvement projects that needed to be done, and some of them are rather large. In fact, when we brought to you the budget request for this year, one of the requests was for the, that the police department starts setting aside about $115,000 every year for five years, so that they could perform the flood mitigation improvements to their building. And when we look at that, $115,000 impact on your annual budget is quite an impact. And then we pair that with some of the other improvements that need to happen that we hadn't even brought to the discussion, which was HVAC replacement or repair in this building. We have some improvements at the OMA. We have replacement of some windows in this building that could happen. The commission room renovation, which we'd like to bring to you for some consideration, and then also some improvements to security on the second floor entryway. And so this would be an opportunity, then, to also finance those projects at the same time. All of them largely are improvement projects that extend the life of the building, and that would make sense in a 10-year financing situation. If we were to pair that together with the other two projects, it would make sense to do that. We could also temporarily note those, but now you're paying additional financing costs in order to do this as a separate issue. So we'd have a long-term issue, we'd have a short-term issue. And in my mind, that doesn't make sense to pay extra costs when they're all city projects. So this would be one of those types of projects, though, that we, right now, what we have is cost estimates for each of those small parts and pieces. And we would probably go into this, writing that project description in a way that gives you the ability to prioritize those projects, and then start chipping away at the dollars that would be available. So rather than go out today and get cost estimates on every single, updated cost estimates on every single one, we would write the project description in a way that might say, we anticipate that these improvements will cost 2.2 million. They will include things such as, and write it broad enough so that you could narrow the scope of the projects that you want to do. It wouldn't mean that you had to replace the windows if there weren't funds available remaining, and so you can prioritize those projects underneath of that, those dollars. We could do the 2 million, we could do the 2.2 million, depending on what your priorities are there as far as replacements or repairs to the OMA and this building, and those projects in between. The idea today is to get your feedback on, I guess, all three of those items, so that we can start preparing for you for a future meeting, the project authorization resolutions, and start moving that process ahead. Right now, we would have a sale date in probably the first part of November, and, which is, that's still fine, that we would be getting it done before the holidays, which is always a tough time to sell in the market. So we'd want to get it done in November. So if we could bring those to you in, you know, later in August or the first part of September, and start working towards a sale date, then that would benefit us greatly, I believe. So from that standpoint, I'd love to get some feedback from you on all three of those items. And if you're interested or not interested in the facility improvements, if you'd like, we can have an even further discussion about those specific items and the priority of those items, or we could move ahead with writing a project description that's rather broad, then go out and get true cost estimates, and then come back and prioritize at a later date, once we know kind of where each one of those might land in total cost.
So the total 2.2 million, really, in all three of these things, right?
No, no. The 2.2 is for the facility improvements. So the facility improvements would be an impact of about $260,000 annually. And those would be, now, it would be less than that number. I don't have the breakout. Part of that would come from the OMA budget, and then the rest of it would come from the debt service fund. And there is capacity in the debt service fund to be able to make those payments, and so we could do it that way. We may have to make a budget adjustment in the way that we budget things this year, in order to make sure that we're meeting the, you know, statute requirements for the debt service fund, but we can make those adjustments before we bring the final budget back to you. And to be a little more clear, for next year's budget, there would not be any additional or different impact than we've already seen, because it was already worked into a reserve account in the debt service fund, anticipating that we had, we would have some future debt payments.
And if the commission wants those, wants you to bring this back, you can show them the capacity or what we're paying each year versus what we would be adding.
Absolutely.
I'm just looking at all these different things as far as improvements to their facilities, and I guess I'm thinking the, what was it, rehabbing of the commission chamber. I guess some of these, I'd kind of like to know what we have, an estimate, what each of these costs to kind of, that's kind of a low priority comparison to other things like HVAC and security, but if we had some numbers to see what, who do those would cost, estimates, anything that we're gonna have.
Do you want me to run kind of through a list right now? Would you rather me bring that back later? I could give you a broad, let me just give you a broad, a broad idea. So the HVAC improvements for this building is around a million dollars. The building updates, the flood mitigation improvements to the law enforcement center is about $600,000. The quote was 560. We know there's gonna be additional, so I rounded that to $600,000, just as a soft estimate for right now, so we could get that final. The auditorium seating and carpet, and the, there's an HVAC unit that needs to be replaced at the OMA, that's about $225,000. The commission room renovation is $200,000. Security for the second floor, we've only, we've estimated that to be somewhere around $150,000, but that is a very soft estimate. We have just, just kind of spitballed that one. We're just not exactly sure what that could be. And then the window replacement is just around $30,000. The window replacement is largely on the second floor, where the sun has beat on the seals of the windows, and they, they leak and have condensation, that type of thing. So those are all the projects that are included in, in that number.
It seems like some of these projects have been discussed under ARPA dollars, too.
Just the one, I believe, and that would be the commission room renovation. I think we had mentioned it at one point. And to be a little more clear, it's not just an update of the existing commission chambers. It would be a renovation that would include maybe removing this wall, opening up the commission chambers, providing a little bit different look and feel and ability to have great conversations, both for study sessions and for regular commission meetings, as well as some of the other meetings that are held in that, that space. So we have some very general drawings of what that might look like or entail.
And better reticement and better protection for the IT equipment we have in there, and probably reconfiguring that.
Yes. And we absolutely could for those, we could use those ARPA dollars for that project as well. I put them in here because I wasn't sure where we were gonna land on the priority of that, but if we structure it this way, we could move the, you know, keep that in or move it out, and reprioritize those projects that way, too. Or we could just lower the total dollar amount to possibly the 2 million, and fund that, you know, move ahead with that project under those ARPA dollars as well. We have a couple of different options there.
It seems like, too, in my tenure here, we've also discussed city hall air conditioning several times, and I just did a quick little search, and I can't believe the number of times it's been on the agenda, where we've discussed city hall HVAC. And I just, it's gotta be done. I mean, every year I say that, it's gotta be done. I mean, there's just, you cannot not have an air conditioner and a heater.
Likely original equipment, some of you worked there when we were younger.
And the seating in the auditorium, is that, was that replacement, John? It's obviously been replaced sometime along the line from the beginning, but do you know how old it is?
I don't actually know how old it is. And I didn't ask Tiffany to be here, but I do know that this cost estimate is, is recent, like within the last few weeks. It's carpeting and seating replacement throughout, so.
Mike, I believe those seats are from the last renovation that Lloyd Contractors did on the auditorium. And how long ago was that, 40 years?
Seventy-eight, I think.
Yeah.
And I think they were looking to also update them in the sense like cup holders and things that, you know, make people more comfortable when they're, when they're sitting there.
It will, it will improve the overall look and feel of the space, and it will really go along with that new event type of, you know, programming that they're trying to bring in and continue that long-term success.
Well, these are all pretty self-explanatory. The only one I would like more information on is the security, you know, what that entails, like what all we plan on doing that. That's a pretty hefty estimate, $150,000. So I mean, there's a lot that I would think would be involved in that. So just if we could have more of a breakdown of what was going on. The other stuff, as Commissioner Hayes said, we've talked about a lot of this for years, and certainly the law enforcement one is, I think, a priority, too, because we don't need that to happen again, where evidence is possibly damaged or ruined. So I think these are all good things that we certainly need to take care of.
Okay, so along those lines, then, if we were to come back with more information on the facility improvements, along the lines of what you're asking right there, with the list and maybe some better updated estimates, but also a project authorization resolution for the overall bond issue, for discussion, maybe we'll have it, you know, even if it's two, the first time we'll bring it to you, and maybe further discussion on facility improvements, the second time maybe nailed down, and then for a regular meeting, would that be acceptable way to move ahead? And again, I think that'll be later August or probably, potentially in September. I can't remember what dates we came up with as a good, as timing.
I'm assuming that the 57,8 is an estimate based on today's interest rate, so if it comes up, that might change. So we could certainly decide not to go that route, if that's the case.
Yes.
Down the road.
Yep, we could certainly decide not to do it. There is no negative benefit to doing it, unless, of course, it were to cost us more. But that, even a couple, few weeks ago, I think our estimate was like $35,000. So it's possible that that rate may continue to go down just slightly, and so that might improve, whereas that, you know, a few weeks ago or a month ago, we weren't really sure where that was heading.
So a lot of these, as you know, are, are maintenance issues, and governments are no different than any other business. When it comes to where you cut your dollars, a lot of businesses cut their dollars on their maintenance and their upkeep, and they pay for it. And that's a lesson that, that every government, and hopefully citizens, will understand as far as keeping the assets that we own updated and working to the best of their ability. It's just a lot less expensive for the taxpayer if that happens. So I appreciate you having this discussion today.
Yes, absolutely.
So if I get this right, so we're looking at bond issue late fall sometime, we're thinking day to night?
We would want to close yet this year, but the sale would probably be the first part of November.
And so as far as Cedar Street, that won't slow that down, will you? Cash, we need to temporarily fund that?
Yes, so the construction will likely start after Labor Day, but the first time that we would actually probably need funds would be in October sometime. By the time we close, we might be 30 days out from that, but we shouldn't, that should be a very small portion of the overall expense.
Do you have some sort of direction now from us that you can, just maybe?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to our 2023 budget comments and questions with Director Landis also.
The question is, do you have any questions?
The loaded question.
The loaded question. I don't have anything to present to you, but as we said in the previous meetings, we'll just ask, you know, make sure that you have an open option to ask any future, or questions about the future budget presentation.
So do you want this on here every week until you get to the end? Just so you know it's there, in case you have a question.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary to be on the agenda, but I certainly think that if any of us commissioners have a question about something that comes up, that we, we certainly, you know, ask that question.
Then our plan would be to bring that back. I have two study sessions with opportunity to have further discussion would be the 22nd and 23rd. Yes. Two weeks off. Yes, thank you.
Those will include the utility budgets, right?
Yes. It would be all budgets that are included in the public hearing.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Director Landis on 2023 budget so far?
I guess I just want to make sure I got clarified if we want to reduce our proposal levy that would come in one of these meetings we're talking about, cutting something out, right? How we live on, now we can go below it.
Yeah, so we can have further discussion at those two study sessions. There will be a public hearing, and then you would be asked to approve at some level, whatever level that is. And you can either do that, I would recommend on the same night as the public hearing, that you would at least consider it that night. And if you need to carry it over, there would be one additional option in September. Our deadline is October 1st to have it turned into the county. So you have those two meetings in September to make a final decision as efficient.
And Commissioner, as always, this is, this is your agenda, and this is your commission. You can discuss it at any meeting you have.
As a side note, I will not be here next Monday, but any other.
We can't discuss that weekend.
Well, you can discuss it, but I can't answer any questions, at least.
All right, I don't think we have any comments or comments for anything in this section.
Thank you so much.
That'll move us on to comments by our city manager.
All right, so three things today. We did receive Lakeside bids. I would anticipate you will see them for the first time next Monday. There were two bids that came in, and you'll, I think, anyway, you'll see it next Monday formally on your agenda to discuss. Kansas Gas Service on the base grant, you will see it on the agenda next Monday, next Monday. And even though Molly won't be here, Blaine and I will talk you through that, this has taken several months since the announcement to get to the point where all the parties agree upon how this will work. So I would ask that you please So I would ask that you please keep an open mind. The sooner the sooner that we get that agreement approved, the sooner that Kansas Gas Service can start ordering and getting that project in the ground, okay? As far as our other base projects, which is the water tower, lift station, and
Cutwood Lift Station and Lift Station.
Anyway, that is up at KDHE, and it is still in review with the other $5,457 applications that they have up there. There is a there is not only a backlog on these projects, but there is also a backlog on normal projects that the city has to submit to KDHE. And that is it.
There's some comments by city commissioners. Commissioner Graves?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kayler?
None at this time.
Mayor Prokhorov's getting one. All right, that moves on to comments by the mayor. I have none except for remove this recess into executive session for the purpose of engaging confidential communications with the governing body's attorney, specifically to receive legal advice, and that we reconvene in this room in 15 minutes. I guess it'll give us a couple of minutes to get out of here, so 4:48.
To include Melanie.
To include Melanie, our director land is and our city manager. No action will be taken.